The witnesses for our final panel will discuss the chemical structure and pharmacological effects of synthetic drugs. Dr. Gregory Dudley is the Everly Family Distinguished Professor and Chair of the C. Eugene Bennett Department of Chemistry at West Virginia University. Previously, he was on the faculty in the Department of Chemistry and Biochemistry at the Florida State University. Dr. Terrence Boos is the Section Chief of the Drug and Chemical Evaluation Section, Office of Diversion Control, Drug Enforcement Administration. Dr. Boos’ responsibilities include managing a multidisciplinary group of scientists. And finally, Dr. Rick Doblin founded Multi-Disciplinary Association for Psychedelic Studies, MAPS, in 1986. This is one time I’m happy to use the acronym to help develop legal context for the beneficial uses of psychedelics and marijuana. Under Dr. Doblin’s research leadership, MAPS is currently funding clinical trials of MDMA as a tool to assist psychotherapy for the treatment of post-traumatic stress disorder, PTSD. So, Dr. Dudley.
Okay. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come here and speak with you today and for considering my opinions. I provided a written statement that you should have received. I’m not going to read from that statement. I will mention that it focused on three sections, three parts, all towards the aim of what I hope will be some helpful contributions towards improving and strengthening the sentencing guidelines, towards the aim of having them be as logical and consistent as possible, at least where it comes to drug sentencing based on principles and logic of medicinal chemistry. In my experience, both in working with medicinal chemists and in working with the courts in sentencing hearings, I see that there’s an underlying logic to the drugs as listed in the sentencing guidelines that is based on the chemical structure and pharmacological effects as covered in medicinal chemistry. And so, the first part of my written statements point to or focus on areas where I feel like there are some ambiguities or inconsistencies that could be resolved. In particular, what I perceive to be a discrepancy between how THC and marijuana are treated in the guidelines versus how they are presented in nature, where current batches of marijuana, as I understand it, are on the order of 10 to 15 percent of THC, whereas the ratio in the guidelines for THC is 167 to 1 with respect to marijuana, which would be more consistent with a 0.6 percent or six parts per thousand concentration of THC in marijuana. And because a lot of the new substances are compared based on medicinal chemistry principles to listed substances like THC or marijuana, where there are inconsistencies, it leads to confusion. And I’ll highlight one particular hypothetical and how that would be played out with different interpretations would it lead to different sentencing outcomes. There are also some ambiguities that have come up in terms of how drug mixtures are treated and as well as—well, and I’ll come back to the other thing here. So, the second point that I focused on is something that I think was part of the committee’s charge here, and that is to look at new emerging synthetic drugs, particularly the synthetic cannabinoids and the synthetic cannabinoids. I heard some discussion this morning about the challenges at the regulatory stage with the Analog Enforcement Act and how to cover these particular substances at the enforcement phase. I think at sentencing, we’ve already resolved the enforcement issue. The substances in question are known, and their legal status is already known because that’s been covered at the trial, which makes the notion of a categorical coverage simpler from the sentencing guidelines perspective. So, in my written statements, I’d laid out some ideas for categorical coverage of synthetic cannabinoids and categorical coverage of synthetic cannabinoids and proposed what I consider to be reasonable and appropriate ratios based on comparison and context to other substances that were listed in the guidelines. The final point, the brief point at the end of my written statement, was just to raise the issue or to echo the issue that had already been raised about using marijuana as the equivalency standard in the guidelines. I understand the logic behind having an equivalency standard. Marijuana is complicated because it is a heterogeneous substance and can vary from batch to batch, so we’re comparing new substances to something that is something of a moving target. And so, I would suggest a departure from the marijuana equivalency ratio, but I won’t say anything more about that. With my time here today, I wanted to focus on hypothetical sentencings involving one kilogram of a synthetic cannabinoid substance produced and distributed in the context of synthetic marijuana. Synthetic marijuana, while I understand the aversion to the term from the scientific community, in the street sense, synthetic marijuana is a product that is intended to mimic marijuana in its appearance and its consumption and its effects. And as such, a logical comparator to synthetic marijuana in the guidelines would be marijuana, and I discussed that in my report. What I want to do is talk about the different alternatives that could be presented in the current guidelines that might be resolved by a categorical listing of synthetic cannabinoids as well as specific examples of synthetic cannabinoids. So, for example, if one were convicted of a crime involving a kilogram of JWH-18, that substance could be found either pure in the white powder form or already absorbed onto plant material. And according to DEA notification, what is a—that there’s no standard recipe, but what is a common recipe is roughly a 14 kilograms of synthetic marijuana could be produced by a kilogram of JWH-18. So, one might have one kilogram of JWH-18 in pure form or 14 kilograms of a product colloquially referred to as synthetic marijuana. Those products, each case involving one kilogram of the synthetic cannabinoid substance, could be compared to THC or compared to marijuana. It could be weighed as one kilogram or as 14 kilograms. So, to me, all this scenario should result in a single, a direction, a guidance to a single sentence. But in fact, what could occur, and what I believe has occurred in different cases around the country, is that a kilogram of synthetic marijuana has been compared to marijuana directly, a kilogram of JWH-18 has been compared to marijuana directly, the kilogram of JWH-18 has been compared to THC, and then applied a 167 to 1 multiplier, or the JWH-18 might have been converted into synthetic marijuana to make 14 kilograms and then applied the 167 to 1 multiplier to come up with a marijuana equivalency of 2,338 kilos. So, that one kilo of JWH-18 could be sentenced as if it were a kilogram of marijuana, all the way up to 2,338 kilograms of marijuana. And that’s an ambiguity and inconsistency that I think would be resolved by listing JWH-018 in the guidelines, and I would recommend a marijuana equivalency ratio for it of 14 to 1 to reflect the amount of synthetic marijuana product that in principle can be produced from one kilogram of JWH-18. And this is consistent with the guidelines reflecting the object of the intent being the target or the object of the intent being what the courts should consider. So, if the object of the intent, the object of one kilogram of JWH-18 is to produce 14 grams of a substance that mimics the appearance and effects of synthetic marijuana, then that one kilogram of JWH-18 should be equated to 14 kilograms of marijuana. Now, there are other considerations. Certainly, the synthetic cannabinoids are not the same as THC, and I think there are other things that would go into the ultimate discussions here. But I think as a starting point, and especially if the guidelines are going to provide the structure for new substances to be compared using the logic of medicinal chemistry, we’d want the ratios given in the guidelines to reflect the logic of medicinal chemistry as closely as possible, with perhaps text elsewhere to give guidance on when it might be appropriate for upward departures or downward departures. I see the red light is on, and I apologize for going over, and thank you for allowing me to continue that train of thought to the end.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Uh, Dr. Boos?
Good afternoon, Judge Pryor and distinguished members of the U.S. United States Sentencing Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to represent the Department of Justice today to briefly discuss synthetic drugs and impact on public health and safety. I’d like to highlight some important points presented in the Department of Justice position paper provided to the commission on the five substances. Our section at DEA evaluates information on substances of abuse. We collect the information, and we initiate regulatory controls to protect the public where appropriate. Fortunately, we’re able to only respond to most persistent harmful of those substances that are out there. We know that there are many of these substances, and we took action on the five that are being considered right now by the commission. We also provide testimony at federal prosecutions and sentencing hearings, our scientists do. Starting in 2009, the United States experienced a dramatic increase in trafficking and abuse of these drugs. They were intended to mimic traditional substances of abuse. Across the board, and I think you’ve heard it from other speakers today, these substances have negatively impacted the user and communities, and it continues. The substances being discussed have no approved medical use and lack information to safely allow them to be given to humans. Our traffickers recklessly put the public in harm’s way by distributing these substances with unpredictable side effects. To increase our knowledge of how these substances abuse act, our scientists work closely with the National Institute on Drug Abuse and other experts to establish study protocols to delineate the mechanisms of action of these novel drugs, then determine their pharmacological similarities with other known drugs of abuse. These studies are the gold standard, and DEA is fortunate to draw upon the expertise of those leading the field in these studies. Numerous pharmacological studies have been undertaken with the assistance of our federal partners for these substances being discussed today. These substances, these studies have enhanced our understanding of the effects of these substances are intended to complement the scientific literature. Currently, our scientists in the Drogen Chemical Evaluation Section are required to testify at sentencing hearings in order for a court to determine what substance in the guideline is most similar to the newly controlled substance or potentially that analog that’s been prosecuted. These hearings are resource intensive. Often DEA must provide both a chemist and a pharmacologist to testify at a given hearing. Similarly, the defense frequently calls an expert at also these sentencing hearings. These contested hearings require courts to weigh through complicated scientific evidence. Even after one court reaches a conclusion about a guideline comparison, other courts can do and relitigate the issue, sometimes with disparate results. Providing sentencing equivalencies for these substances, the two cannabinoids, three cannabinoids, will assist courts, prosecutors, defense attorneys, and provide greater certainty for all involved. In addition to the synthetic cannabinoids and cannabinoids being discussed today, MDMA continues to be a serious drug of concern. At the root of MDMA’s widespread popularity is a mistaken belief that it’s a safe drug with little toxicity. In fact, MDMA is an addictive psychoactive substance with unpredictable results. In 2001, the U.S. Sentencing Commission established MDMA guidelines based on research that demonstrated acute and long-term dangers to the users. Since then, findings have been strengthened by ongoing research utilizing more precise measurements, which further conclude that MDMA is neurotoxic and dangerous to the user. I’d like to thank you again for the time today, and if you have any questions, I’d be happy to answer them.
Dr. Doblin?
Yeah. Thank you. I’ll just add that I’ve got a master’s and PhD from the Kennedy School of Government in the regulation of the medical use of Schedule I drugs. Thank you very much for having me back here after testifying 16 years ago in 2001 with other colleagues about the evaluation of the scientific research around the risks and benefits of MDMA, both in clinical contexts and in non-medical settings. Our views were largely discounted at the time in favor of risk estimates about MDMA that have since been shown, according to the last 16 years of scientific research, to have been excessive. There was images of holes in the brain, all sorts of things that were not factually accurate. There are now over 5,000 papers in Medline on MDMA or ecstasy, and it’s one of the most well-studied substances that we know of. Probably about $350 million of research has been spent mostly looking at the risks of MDMA. According to Dr. Paul Hofer, a policy analyst at the Federal Defenders and author of the paper Ranking Drug Harms for Sentencing Policy, the sentencing commission guidelines now penalize MDMA more severely than PCP, LSD, methamphetamine, heroin, and powdered cocaine. Two federal courts have since concluded that the MDMA guidelines need not be followed because MDMA’s sentencing severity was found to be disproportionate to MDMA’s actual harm. I’m deeply grateful for this new opportunity after 16 years to present written and now this oral testimony to aid in your deliberations reviewing the current sentencing guidelines for MDMA. To begin, I want to quote reports from a few PTSD patients from our MDMA-assisted psychotherapy studies to give you a sense of how pure MDMA can be used in a beneficial way with a high safety profile in controlled clinical settings. And there are some relationships between the work we’re doing and risk estimates for use in non-clinical settings. MDMA-assisted psychotherapy works by allowing the participant to address the root cause of his or her trauma in a safe and supportive manner and reprocess that trauma without the debilitating associations of fear and anxiety. MDMA reduces activation of fear in the amygdala, which allows participants to revisit past traumas without the emotional reactivity normal in PTSD, and this also explains why it has found a widespread use in non-medical settings. One study participant, military veteran CJ Harden, explained to the New York Times in November 2016, “MDMA changed my life. It allowed me to see my trauma without fear or hesitation and finally process things and move forward. Before, I just felt hopeless and in the dark, but the MDMA session showed me a light I could move toward. Now, I’m out of the darkness, and the world is all around me.” Another veteran, Jonathan Lubeki, wrote, “I cannot emphasize how much this treatment changed my life. I went from constant daily suicidal ideation, anxiety, depression, to almost nothing. The best part was this was not lifelong treatment and medication.” By that, he means that we only administer MDMA three times within a three-and-a-half-month process of more or less weekly non-drug psychotherapy. Another study participant, Hani Wittem, who survived sexual assault recounts, “For the first time in my life, I was able to actually look at everything I had been running away from my whole life. That pretty much changed everything for me. I feel like the luckiest person in the world because I think I’ve been given something that very few people have, which is a second chance to create the life I want.” Since 2001, my nonprofit MAPS has sponsored nine FDA-approved drug development studies evaluating the safety and efficacy of MDMA-assisted psychotherapy for PTSD, for anxiety associated with life-threatening illness, and for social anxiety in autistic adults at research sites across the U.S. and Switzerland, Canada, and Israel. On November 29th, 2016, MAPS had a FDA End of Phase II meeting, and the FDA approved our move to large-scale Phase III trials of MDMA-assisted psychotherapy for severe PTSD. Final phase of research required for full FDA approval for prescription use. FDA’s green light for Phase III studies was based on the results of a meta-analysis from Phase II pilot studies in 107 chronic treatment-resistant PTSD subjects. At the 12-month follow-up after the last MDMA session, two-thirds of them no longer had PTSD, and were working with leading VA-affiliated researchers blending MDMA with existing non-drug psychotherapies called prolonged exposure and cognitive behavioral conjoint therapy. We anticipate completing Phase III in 2021 after evaluating at least 300 more subjects with the goal of obtaining approval from the FDA and the European Medicines Agency. Though MDMA has a favorable risk-benefit ratio in clinical settings, what does this mean for the risks of MDMA in non-medical settings? There are tragic, but fortunately very rare outcomes from overheating and dying after consuming MDMA, usually after dancing in hot spaces. Even rarer are cases of people drinking too much water after taking MDMA and dying of hyponitremia. However, with simple public health harm reduction-focused policies like cool-down rooms, access to free water, and better education, those harms can be minimized significantly. Despite the lack of proactive harm reduction measures, emergency room statistics from 2001, most recently available data, show that MDMA-related emergency department visits only amounted to 1.8 percent of drug or alcohol visits that year, and a majority of these cases were acute psychological distress and most cases resolved after supportive care. Additionally, some fraction of non-medical users of MDMA use it quite often for periods of a year or two, with such use almost always self-limiting due to the diminishing subjective effects of MDMA. With normally addictive drugs, when tolerance develops, users just take larger amounts. With MDMA, that fails to restore the early effects but produces more of the speedy side effects. We don’t see long-term decades abuse patterns the way we see with cocaine and methamphetamine and other drugs. The main concern about repeated use has been focused on neurocognitive effects since there are no significant harms to the body that have been reported. In 2001, Dr. John Halpern at Harvard-affiliated McLean Hospital conducted a NIDA-funded study that demonstrated minimal impaired cognitive performance in heavy ecstasy users. This is the most methodologically sound study ever conducted in heavy ecstasy users. We actually found a population of people in Utah, we call them the fallen Mormons, who had not done any other drug but had only done ecstasy. So, this was a good way to separate out what ecstasy did. While non-clinical use of ecstasy can be problematic for some people, there are thousands of people who have experienced healing benefits from MDMA even when taken outside of clinical settings. A 2014 Verge documentary tells the story of Vietnam veteran Bob Walker, who decided to take MDMA outside of clinical settings for self-healing and reported overcoming decades of PTSD, calling it a cure. Thanks to a comprehensive review of peer-reviewed scientific research into the risks of MDMA published since the sentencing guidelines were increased in 2001, data from MAPS’s multi-site studies of the therapeutic risks and benefits of MDMA and hundreds of anecdotes of self-healing from non-medical users of MDMA, it is clear that the sentencing guidelines are disproportionate to its potential harms. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Dudley, I wanted to ask you, in light of your testimony, is it your view that—and putting aside the synthetics for a moment, but let’s just take the non-synthetics that we’re dealing with—is it your view that our chart, our tables and so forth are flawed in some particular ways?
There are particular places where I see some inconsistencies or ambiguities. In general, I think the chart is quite logical and reasonable, and I gave a couple of examples of this in my written report relating to psilocin or psilocybin versus wet mushrooms versus dry mushrooms, where to a first approximation, whether you’re dealing with a gram of psilocin as a pure substance or incorporated into wet or dry mushrooms, that those—so, wet mushrooms will have a lot of other stuff besides the pure psilocin, but the dose of psilocin is logically connected to the sentence, if that makes sense. Same thing with mescaline and peyote.
Well, that’s what we try to do. I mean, I think that’s—the object of our inquiry is to make sure when somebody comes in and says, “The weight is X and the drug is Y,” that judges can look at a table and say, “Well, that’s how serious this is.”
Right. And so, for something like—
It’s level 23, it’s level 21, it’s level whatever it is. I mean, that’s our tab. We’re not chemists. We’re—we’re—well, the old joke is, we’re sentencing accountants, but we’re trying to figure out, you know, where it is. And so, the chart is very important for us and for everybody that the chart accurately reflects the harm that the drug causes.
Right. And in the case of mushrooms and psilocin, the case of peyote and mescaline, the chart accurately reflects the amount of active ingredients in the various doses. In the case of THC and marijuana, however, it does not. Marijuana, a gram of THC is, these days, found generally in about seven or eight grams of marijuana. So, if you have about seven or eight grams of marijuana, you have in your possession about a gram of THC. That THC is equated in the marijuana equivalency tables to 167 grams of marijuana, and that discrepancy, first of all, is a problem in treating—it is an inconsistency with respect to THC and marijuana. But then, when you have new cannabinoid substances coming in that can ambiguously be compared to THC or to marijuana, that choice makes a huge difference in the sentencing.
So, that’s a—but I’d like to ask sort of a larger question, maybe get DEA involved in this. We heard all this testimony today that you could tweak it, tweak the molecules, it’s something different.
Yes.
Not covered. So, my question is, even though we may sit today and try to take these five drugs and so forth and do something, are we on fool’s errand in that we spend all this effort, we try to get it right, and then it becomes meaningless because the sellers out there or the producers simply change it? And is there a way that you suggest that we can approach this problem, especially the two of you? I don’t know.
No, I think we have a large task ahead of us. Obviously, we have—we’ve emergency controlled 40-plus of these substances. We know there’s 700-plus out there by the U.N. We were able to tackle the most persistent and harmful of those. But under the guidelines, we still have a limited number of comparative drugs. Bringing five up under would allow for more comparatives, ones that are more clearly reflective of what we’re dealing with currently at the moment. But yes, we do have an issue where a substance-by-substance comparison is a challenge, and I think DEA, we’ve looked at this and are looking at some other options, too, that we’d be happy to suggest through our DOJ—
Well, I’d love to hear some.
I think some of them, and Dr. Dudley touched on them, it would be a class, possibly a class approach, where you look at the synthetic cannabinoid class, the cannabinoid class, benzodiazepines as a class, and you find a range within that class that would be appropriate.
When we do that in terms of—since it can be—the dose can be in different kinds of formats, what we heard earlier, so it could get sprayed onto plant material or it could be powder, how would we reflect the dose or the weight if we did a class-based approach so that it reflected that variation that you could have in the actual use? If you all—if any of you have a thought on how to do that? Because, you know, we had lots of comments about how in other areas, using the weight of a mixture, like we had comments from the defenders, that leads to disparate results because we’re using weight and, you know, that can—for things that the—whatever substance it’s adhering to weighs a lot, we may have sentences that are out of whack. And I guess I’m concerned that this is the kind of drug that we could have that same problem with, given the varied forms that it takes.
And we have some similar examples now when we deal with heroin and cocaine and the purity of those drugs when they’re encountered. It’s the overall encounter of the drug that, as I understand, gets sentenced.
I think what you—
It’s the overall weight of the drug that gets sentenced at that time in mind.
Right. But for this class of drugs, I guess the concern would be the weight is going to be so variable depending upon what form it is, and it may not actually reflect variations in harm or in even the effects on people because it could just be some inert substance that it’s adhered to. I guess the issue is, is it worse in this context than it might be for some of those other drugs, that we might be concerned that we’re getting a bad match?
If I may, I think the better comparison for these substances, the cannabinoids, rather than referring to heroin or cocaine where there’s a substance on the street that may have varying purity but is still viewed and sold as cocaine, here I think the better way to look at this as two separate types of drugs, the pure substance and then the synthetic marijuana substance that has been absorbed onto inert material. Similarly, just like psilocin and mushrooms are listed separately, and mescaline and peyote are listed separately, THC and marijuana are listed separately, you might list the synthetic cannabinoid pure substance actual separately from the substance sold on the street absorbed onto plant material that is manufactured and intended to mimic marijuana.
The sentencings, then, would evolve to a chemical analysis as to the—I would have called it the purity of the drug, but that may be the wrong word. It may be the dilution or the—
Well, it would—
Other substance—I mean—
Sorry.
No, no, sorry. I mean, I’m just trying to figure out what judges are supposed to do.
So, you would typically see either the pure substance or the white powdery substance. I shouldn’t say pure because it could be 60 percent pure or 70 percent pure, but the white substance that is not in its marijuana-mimicking, smokeable form, or you might be dealing with the material that has already been manufactured into the synthetic marijuana product that is a leafy substance. And so, if you’re dealing with a leafy substance that has been infused with a synthetic cannabinoid, that would be one type of substance where you would be treating—you would be thinking of that as— of that as a marijuana mimic, right? The pure powdery substance might be intended to be produced, to be used to produce synthetic marijuana, but that itself might not be appropriate to compare to marijuana directly. Does that make sense?
If I could add on to that-
Yes, but I'm not sure it's logical. Well, it's in the pure form, I'm assuming that the end user would not be using it in the pure form, but would be in a mixture form, and it could be more deadly in the mixture form because of that, because the end user does not know what the purity level would be.
Right, so I'm suggesting that the mixture form should be treated differently than the pure form.
Should be treated more severely, I would assume, based on that theory.
Or less severely, based on the-
If it's more dangerous, if it's more dangerous after sprayed on a plant, let's say, and the level is very high and it's very dangerous.
The level in the, you know, ounce for ounce, the level in the mixture is going to be lower than the level in the pure substance.
But maybe more dangerous, because the person would be more inclined to use it in that form rather than in the pure form.
The person, right, the person, the person on this, the end user is likely to be using this as, the same way one would use marijuana, roll it up and smoke it.
But in fact, if you're using a very, a very potent substance, it could be very dangerous to the person.
Well, but, okay, so the substance itself could be regulated as a synthetic cannabinoid, and it could be scheduled as, to reflect its potency, or its, yeah, its potency, I guess, or its potency. The synthetic marijuana product, the way that the marijuana is typically sentenced is, is independent of the strain of marijuana and the level of THC in it, which is, is an imperfection, but not one that, but one that would be difficult to resolve, right? Because the, the extra lab work that would go into establishing the, the level of THC in different quantities of marijuana, may or, that cost may or may not be justified. If it is, that's fine, and likewise, if one wanted to go to the, go to the extra steps to identify the level of the new synthetic cannabinoid in the THC, in the marijuana, so if you had a kilogram of synthetic marijuana, one could go the extra step and determine exactly how much of the active ingredient is present, and then sentence according to the amount of that active ingredient. But if one were going to sentence according to the amount of the synthetic marijuana product, assuming that that product was manufactured to mimic the effects of marijuana and intended for an end user to smoke it, then the reasonable comparator in the guidelines at that point would not be heroin, cocaine, or THC, but rather marijuana itself. And that's, that's where I was going with the two separate, there's the synthetic marijuana product and the synthetic cannabinoid product that would ultimately be used in the manufacture of synthetic marijuana. And I think those, I think the cleanest thing, the easiest thing would be to treat those separately in the guidelines, but there are logical ways to do it, to do it either way.
If I could add on to that, to quantify the amount of drug that would be on plant material would be extremely challenging for our forensic laboratories. There, right now, there are experience, whether it be local, state, or federal, there's a huge backlog of analyzing drugs. Usually, they're, they're put on rush when, when something comes to trial, but for them to go through and have to quantify how much synthetic cannabinoid is on that plant material would be really, it would be problematic for them.
So you're saying, just impractical?
It's impractical.
Every, every, every drug case, I mean, I just see them, every drug case would, would go to the lab, both sides would be able to conduct their, their own analysis, and you, and they're rather expensive propositions, aren't they, to conduct this analysis? I don't know whether they are or not, are they?
It is, it, I agree with Dr. Boz, it is, it would be impractical, it would be expensive. And to be clear, that's not what I'm suggesting either, right? I think we don't treat marijuana differently depending on how much THC is in a particular strain, and it would be very expensive and problematic to attempt to treat synthetic marijuana differently depending on which and how much of the particular synthetic cannabinoid was present. I think a more pragmatic approach would be a categorical coverage of the pure synthetic cannabinoid material that is intended for production, and then categorical coverage of the synthetic marijuana material that is in distribution and use.
You say categorical coverage, what, what you're suggesting is that we, that that will then take care of the problem of molecular changes to some extent?
It will for, for the purposes of sentencing.
Well, that's why we're here.
Right, and so at sentencing, we heard testimony this morning about the complexities of the analog enforcement and how that dilemma that it poses for prosecutors and for, for police law enforcement. At sentencing, that matter has already been resolved, right? If we're at sentencing, then the substance in question-
The relevant conduct it has.
Fair enough, yeah.
Can I ask you, Dr. Boz, on, on the MDMA issue, so I get that it's still serious, still has all these effects, but what's your response to Dr. Doplin's point that it's sentenced, you know, it's, it's treated as a greater harm than meth or heroin? Is there evidence to support that if the relative harm of the drug as compared to other drugs? Do you have a basis for assuming it's worse than those other drugs?
You know, I, I look at the comparison for methamphetamine, which is actually a Schedule II drug, and it's approved as a medication. I believe it's 1,000 to 2,000 under the guidelines. MDMA is 1,000 to 500. It's not an approved drug. Dr. Doplin's talking about it with respect to some select clinical trials that they're conducting. Still hasn't been approved by FDA as a therapeutic, has been placed in another schedule, it remains a Schedule I drug.
From an enforcement point of view, does it really make any difference whether something is a Schedule I drug, Schedule II drug?
It's a violation of the control of substances.
Well, it's a violation, right.
No, it's, you know, Schedule I, obviously, is something with no approved medical use. It's placed in Schedule I. Two is, are all, two through five are all the substances with abuse liability that have an approved medical use. They've been evaluated, they have a proper safety profile that's taken place, and the FDA has approved them to be medications.
But other than the scheduling, do you have a basis for assuming that it's, it's worse? Because the scheduling, for various reasons, some drugs stay where they are, for political reasons and otherwise, so apart from that, is there scientific evidence for it?
I think that the scientific evidence still demonstrates it's a harmful drug, and some of what was sort of described is not the lesions in it. They exist. We know there are neurocognitive issues associated with the use of it. It's not used, it's used in a setting, it's not under the care of a physician. If you're in a, in a clinical trial, that's something completely different than what we're talking about when it's on a illicit market. And as we've seen with MDMA, and there's a really good report out of the EU, I mean, we're looking at upwards of 140-plus milligrams a pill. I mean, these are heavy doses of drug that are being trafficked.
I guess if I could just add one point, I think that there is no doubt that at certain doses MDMA can be damaging to the serotonergic nerve terminals, but the doses that, even the 140 milligrams are below those levels, and the doses that we use in therapy are 125 milligrams, followed two, two hours later by 62 and a half. So from the perspective of the FDA, these intermittent uses, neurotoxicity is no longer an issue because there's corresponding benefits. And I think in most evaluations of the non-medical use of MDMA, that people are using it because they experience some benefits as well. So I do think that there are risks, but a lot of the risks are controllable through harm-reduction policies, and I don't think they're anywhere near as severe as they've been portrayed in the past. And we also have now, since the middle '70s MDMA was used as a therapeutic drug, so we have about 40 years almost or more of experience with MDMA. And so the concerns that were expressed during the 2001 about sort of the time bomb theory, that these neurotoxic effects, we didn't see really functional consequences of a severe nature, but they would come with aging as people's brains were aging, that's not proven to be the case. So I think it's a much more reassuring picture than it's been in the past.
Okay, unless any of you have something else to add, we, I want to thank all of you for appearing today and offering your presentations, and of course, the written materials that you had already submitted. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our public hearing. We'll be in, we're adjourned.